Well, we'd like to welcome everyone to this evening's city council meeting, January 14th, 2020. Welcome in the new year. It's good to have a number of individuals that are here this evening. So I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And the first thing we'll do is the pledge, and I'll ask Council President Menke to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kelly. The next item on the agenda is a public comment, and anyone that would like to speak on a topic other than a matter that's in litigation, a quasi judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. We limit these comments to three minutes. Speakers may not yield their time to others. In order to encourage an environment of openness, courtesy, and respect for differing points and view, please refrain from behavior that is disruptive to the meetings such as making loud noises, clapping, shouting, booing, or any other activity that would disrupt the orderly conduct of this meeting. Abusive language will not be tolerated. This evening, I've got two cards, and the first one is Ethan Down. Did I, is it Ethan? Ethan, welcome. And we've got all of your information, so welcome, and you can address the council.
Hello, I'm Ethan Downs, and I'm curious what became of the resolution we proposed. I've been very invested with a group of community members called Drawdown. In Drawdown, we analyze the book Drawdown that provides many potential solutions to climate change while speaking with like-minded people who are also taking action against climate change within the community. This has furthered my passion and interest in the progression of our resolution. I know many people in this community who are eager to help and take action in support of this resolution. Thank you for taking your time to listen.
Thank you, Ethan. Ukiah, welcome. It's good to see you again.
Thank you.
I think we've had some of you in front of us before.
Yep, we're back.
Go ahead.
Good evening, I'm Ukiah Horensteiner, and we, as students at McMinnville High School, requested in October that you pass the Climate Emergency Resolution. And we are curious what staff and city council members have done in the past three months. Climate change is a pressing issue, and we are eager to help lessen its, lessened, lessen, sorry, its effects on our town. We know that we are in the midst of a climate crisis, and that creatures are dying because of fires and flooding. We urge you to act on the resolution that we presented in the fall and make change in our community. This isn't just a piece of paper or a wish list. This is our future in hand. People have been asking that you, the city council, take real action against climate change since 2007, and while some steps have been taken, we fear that not enough has been done. We have here a petition with over 500 signatures, mostly from fellow students at Mac High, who support the Climate Emergency Resolution and are ready to create solutions and make an environmental impact. We are eager to get involved with the next step, so please let us know when the work session will be held and include us in the process. We look forward to meeting with you all soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And you can give your signatures over to Claudia, and then she'll keep up for us unless you want to keep them.
Oh, that's perfect.
Okay, good. And then lastly, Liz. How are you?
I'm well, well, I could be better. Liz Marlestein, I live at 1525 Northeast 18th Street, and I guess I would like to know why these students aren't getting a response. I'm shocked. When I saw their resolution a few months ago, I was so incredibly proud of them. And I want you to see this. This is my five children and their 15, I have 15 grandchildren. And even though they don't live here in McMinnville, they are a part of what is going on this climate crisis. We have started Fire Drill Fridays. Every Friday, we are going to be meeting out here on these four corners. I would really like you to be there to show this city that you care. Please, four to five every Friday. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. And then I have one more, Nick Peyton. Welcome, Nick.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Nick Peyton, and I'm one of the Climate Ambassadors for McMinnville High School. And I know at the school, we've been doing a lot to try and combat our contributions to climate change, like we've been doing recycling, and we're planning lots of events to try and improve our sustainability and make sure that we're not contributing that much to climate change. And I, we came here in October to present our climate resolution, and we're just really looking forward to working with you in the future and seeing what you guys have done with it, because meeting with you and moving this process forward would be really important. And climate change has been a threat for a while now, multiple decades, and there's a huge discrepancy between what could have been done by now and what has been done by now. And it would be, I think it would be a bad idea to follow the examples that many politicians have set for us in not taking enough action. And so I would urge you guys to move this process forward, and we're, yeah, we're really looking forward to working with you in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. That takes us to our next area on the agenda, and that's advice and information. And so we're to a point right now where we will have reports from our counselors on committee and board assignments. And so I'll start to my left. Adam, if you'd like to just report to us.
We had a lively Airport Commission meeting, four Airport Commission meetings, last week on Tuesday, and Mike had some good news about, we didn't think we were going to get some money for our taxiway project, but it looks like we are. So that was probably the most exciting news of the, of the meeting that we will get underway, that $2.1 million project. The travel organ will likely cover a majority of our 10% match for that federal grant, and we, the city, would probably be on the hook for about $60,000 of that whole project. So in perspective, we could get, get a lot done out of that airport for very little general fund dollars or airport commission dollars. YCOM was canceled due to lack of, lack of things to meet about, and, yeah, other than that, we were successful in interviewing for our enrichment committee. I don't know if we've renamed that yet, but that's for the pool, community center, senior center, and library, and that 18-month committee. So I think our next council meeting in that packet, you guys will see a list of committee members that we interviewed and decided to appoint to that, with, I believe, a chair and vice chair recommendation as well. Pretty exciting, diverse, and well-represented group of genders, races, and geographic location within the city. So I'm excited to see what their 18-months report generates and brings back to us as a council.
Thank you, Adam. Remy?
So on affordable housing task force, there's a couple of things. I've been working on revising our action plan, and we are going to be coming to, I believe with a request, to change us from being a task force to a permanent committee as the issues related to housing homelessness are not a short-term solvable problem. And then I did also want to just address some of the feedback I've been getting about the homeless subcommittee and that being disbanded. In fact, what we're doing is pulling that committee back up into affordable housing. So it was a subcommittee. We had just created a structure in which it was supposed to be meeting regularly on its own, but we were not having regular attendance by those committee members, and the action plans that were supposed to be in development weren't moving at the pace that we wanted them to be. So by pulling it back up into affordable housing, we'll be still focusing on those earnings zero to 120% of median family income. Therefore, we still will be focusing on homelessness and solutions, policy programming and other related to homelessness. We're just pulling it back up into the parent group, but that has not, the focus has not gone away. And, let's see, and then I did meet earlier this week with the Gospel Rescue Mission and a few members of our faith-based community to also address some of the feedback that the mission has been receiving, and to discuss the role of all of the different partners, whether it's the city or nonprofits, the faith-based community, and the mission itself. And we had one meeting, it went very well. We talked, we just had the opportunity to talk a lot about some of the concerns that have been raised and possible plans to address some of those, and we all plan on meeting again. And it was a, I thought it was a very good, successful meeting, and have since had other conversations with members of that, members of that group about broadening, broadening our approach and how we, as a city, can be a good partner in supporting other efforts to address homelessness.
Thank you, Remy. Kelly?
Excuse me, briefly, I attended the City Center Housing Strategy Act. This was the third one, on December 4th. An action plan, I think, has been devised, and we were kind of going over it. It's kind of the preliminary plan from the consultant. And there was a number of very interesting suggestions, and we'll see what happens with some of them. Some sounded very workable, and some, well, maybe not as much. Been involved at the end of, or in that month also in attending MRRAC, and went, did the MRRAC interviews that week. Economic Development Committee meets tomorrow, Wednesday at 4:00 PM, and that will be the first meeting, and it is also going to be at the Community Development Center. Visit McMinnville's Board of Director meeting will be this Thursday at 9:30. It's a one-time change of event or date at the Visit McMinnville offices. The Budget Committee interviews for two candidates will be from 1:00 to 3:00 on Thursday, and another one on Friday at 9:30. So that's what's happening on my calendar.
Thank you. Sal?
Thank you, Mayor. So for the Mid Valley Council of Governments, two named notes, three notes, I guess. First, I have this pretty good placement that Mid Valley continues to carry the area of county to increase homelessness and, undated for homelessness in those counties, so that's been approved and it's going forward in the Mid Valley Council. Another kind of big piece of news out of the Mid Valley Council of Governments, council members unfamiliar with their executive director, Sean O'Day, who has helped us with various processes here in the city. He tendered his resignation in December, and is leaving to take the Deputy Director position of Department of Defense. So he's going to be replaced, we'll take the decision tomorrow, but it looks like he's going to be replaced on an interim basis by the Council of Governments Program Director lately, who doesn't want the full-time position, but that will start the process for launching an executive director search for the council. They also sent us a note, and this is probably for Heather, is she's going to?
She just stepped out for a moment.
Okay. There's an implementation, implementation meetings on the 27th through 28th, that they're asking for representation in the city related to house building 2003, which is asking a lot of, just a session there, looking for cities to provide housing analysis to contribute to that process. Sal, maybe first?
Thank you, Sal. Wendy?
So you've heard a lot from your act tonight, and I don't have anything to add on that. And Kelly already talked about the economic vitality, so I know, nothing more to report.
Thank you. And Zach?
HLC Historic Landmarks Committee had nothing in December, and so we'll be coming together in January, right? I don't think I've seen anything come out, but we'll be meeting in January. Landscape Review is tomorrow. Whoop-whoop. McMinnville Community Media hasn't had their first meeting of the year yet, but they'll set their four meetings of the year, and we'll get to it. Other assignments I had, School Board, or Kids on the Block, work from the summer that we're still meeting to meet for the School Board joint session, looking forward to the School Board telling us what works for them. And then I would request a staff update, as we move from council update to staff, on where the Climate and Sustainability Resolution is in the staff process. Please, that's my report.
Thank you, Zach. And I have, this coming Friday is going to be our County Housing Solutions Meeting, 4:00 in Carlton, for anyone that would like to attend that. Last Thursday, we had the Newburgh-Dundee Bypass Parkway meeting, and we're making, I think, good headway with our discussions there, as we've had an opportunity to meet with the OTC, Oregon Transportation Committee, three times now, and we're going to have a, in February, an opportunity to meet again with a very select number of people, to share with them our vision of where we need to go. There's a new Director of the Department of Transportation, and they have, they're listening to us, I think, with a little more focus than we've had in times past. So some really good things happening as we're looking at Phase Two and Phase Three. MWAC, which is the Mid Valley Transportation Committee, we did not have a meeting in January, and so we'll be meeting in February. I just want to remind all around the room that February 3rd will be the State of the City and the Mayor's Award, and that will be at Mac Market. I think most of you have received invitations to that, and again, we'd ask you to be a part of that. Okay, let's go around and to department heads. In lieu of Heather not being here, Chuck, anything that, from a planning area that you'd like to share? You guys are just really, really busy. When we walk in, your heads barely lift from your tables.
Don't go home at night.
Mike? Rhonda? Claudia? And Jeff?
Susan's in the back, I know she is.
Oh, I, thank you.
In lieu of the full agenda, I have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Other for you is the November Building Report, that's a part of your packet, and the Cash and Investment Reports for October that are in your packet. That takes us to the Consent Agenda this evening. We've got two items. Consider the minutes, oh, go ahead, Wendy.
I think Counselor Siri was wondering about an update on where that was, we had testimony, we had talked about having, we had talked about after their initial presentation, having some action, so we just wanted an update about what has been done. I know Heather has done some communication, but I don't know very much, so maybe an update on that.
So I can give a brief update. So we do have a couple of staff members who are reviewing the sustainability initiative that the city adopted several years ago. We, for a while, had an active employee committee on sustainability. We've implemented a number of those strategies, and they're pulling together the, sort of the current status of those initiatives, and we'll be bringing forward that information and review of the information that was submitted by the students at a future work session. At this point, just based on your calendar and how the council's handling dinner meetings, it's probably going to be to you in March.
Thank you, Jeff.
Is someone communicating back to the point person?
Yeah, I actually sent an email to that group earlier this week, letting them know that we'd be in touch with them. We've reviewed the calendar, and I'll be planning to get back to them later this week. And we want to make sure that they're engaged in the conversation, certainly.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
So that, again, takes us to the Consent Agenda tonight. Two items on the Consent Agenda. We, to consider the minutes of the August 13th, 2019 city council session and the regular city council meeting, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Erschine Law Practices LLC for the 2020 calendar year. Is there anyone that would like to take any item off of our Consent Agenda this evening? Hearing none, then I'll ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Kelly and seconded by Remy. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by saying nay. The Consent Agenda this evening passes unanimously six to zero. That takes us to a number of resolutions that we have this evening. This, the first resolution is Resolution 2020-1, a resolution approving certificate of special election results regarding Measure 36202. Walt, would you present that to us?
Resolution 2020-01, a resolution approving certificate of special election results regarding Measure 36-202.
Okay. And we're very much aware of that. Any discussion on those results? If you look at that, we've gotten the certified copy from the elections, the county clerk, and the information there. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2020-1.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Been moved by Sal and seconded by Kelly. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Resolution 2020-1 passes unanimously six to zero. Our second resolution this evening is 2020-2, a resolution authorizing the approval of cooperative fund exchange between the City of McMinnville and the Oregon Department, and I think that's-
Transportation.
Transportation, yes. And so Mike, we'll call on you. This is somewhat of a housekeeping resolution that we do every year, but if you'd update us on that.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll refer you to your brief staff report that's in your packet, as well as the proposed resolution, a copy of the fund exchange agreement, as well as the original Oregon Transportation Infrastructure Bank loan agreement that we have with the state of Oregon. This will be the fourth year that we've used a fund exchange process to exchange federal funds for state funds that are then applied to our loan payment for our share of the first phase of the Newburgh-Dundee Bypass Project. So our agreement for the loan allows us to use 100% of the federal dollars, transfer them to state dollars, and apply them to the loan. Other fund exchange agreements, the state keeps six cents on the dollars. So unless there are any questions, I'd recommend staff, or the council, adopt the resolution as presented.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2020-2.
So moved.
Second. Or whatever.
It's been moved by Zach and seconded by Sal. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Resolution 2020-2 passes unanimously six to zero. That takes us to a resolution granting a 20-foot wide easement to this McMinnville Water and Light on city-owned airport property, tax lot R442401304. This is Resolution 2020-3, and Mike, we'll ask you to update us on that, or is it Walt? Mike, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Again, I'll refer you to the brief staff report I've placed in the packet, as well as the proposed resolution approving the easement and the easement documents related to granting of an easement on airport property to allow McMinnville Water and Light to construct a 24-inch water line across the property. They're currently working on a project to connect McMinnville's water system to the City of Lafayette's water system. That work will take place this spring and early summer. The particular property that this easement is on is at the end of Runway. It's outside the Irma growth boundary and not scheduled for future development. It's currently farmed under a farm lease. We've reviewed the project with the farmer, and he is okay with the proposed construction and subsequent restoration. The granting of the easement will allow Water and Light to stay out of state highway right of way and minimize, or help minimize, construction impacts of their project. So unless there are any questions, staff would recommend you adopt the resolution granting the easement to McMinnville Water and Light.
Mayor, I would just add that we were asked to review the easement and found it to be in order.
Okay, great. And as Mike indicated, I know from a McMinnville Water and Light perspective, being on the commission, this really is a critical link for us, not only for what we're providing to, at this particular time, but as we look towards the possibility of some regional water solutions for the area, this link is really important. So any, any comments or questions of Mike? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2020-3.
So moved. Second.
It was Zach, and then Sal. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Resolution 2020-3 passes unanimously six to zero. Up for consideration next is Resolution 2020-4, a resolution approving Old Sheridan Road IGA with McMinnville Water and Light. And Mike will have you address this one also.
Thank you again, Mayor, and members of the council. Again, I'll refer you to the staff report that's in your packet by Engineering Services Manager Larry Sherwood. Also included is the draft resolution, a copy of the intergovernmental agreement with McMinnville Water and Light, and the proposed task order with the design engineer on the project. This is the last corridor project in the 2014 transportation bond measure package. It's improvements to Old Sheridan Road between 99W and Cypress. Much like on the other corridor projects, as part of our transportation upgrades, McMinnville Water and Light's interested in water line and electrical upgrades in the same corridor, and much like on Hill Road and on Alpine, they're interested in having their work rolled into our construction plans, and will be bid as part of our construction project and constructed by the same contractor. So what you have before you is the intergovernmental agreement that documents, documents how that will happen. Essentially, our design engineer will design their facilities, they'll approve them, will include them in our bid documents, will receive bids, award the bid, construct the improvements, and McMinnville Water and Light will reimburse for their, cost of their improvements. The other piece of what's before you is the actual task order with Harper-Hoff Peterson Regellis, the design engineer, on the, on the project. Their scope of work will increase by $35,000. That's been reviewed by McMinnville Water and Light. They've agreed to that, and will reimburse the city for those costs. The project itself is expected to commence this summer and be completed in early next calendar year 2021. So unless there are any questions, staff would recommend you adopt the resolution as proposed.
Thank you, Mike. Any clarifying questions for Mike? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2020-4.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Been moved by Wendy, seconded by Sal. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any, any opposed, signify by saying nay. Resolution 2020-4 passes unanimously six to zero. Our next resolution, 2020-5, a resolution accepting the annual financial report of the McMinnville Urban Renewal Agency for fiscal year ending June 30, 2021. McMinnville Urban Renewal Agency for fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, per Oregon Revised Heather, lead us in through this.
Yeah, so Mayor and councilors, per Oregon regulations, we do need to present you with a annual financial report for the Urban Renewal Agency that you accept. And then after your acceptance of it, we do publish notice that it's available and make it available for the next two months. Really, this is sort of a report on where we're at financially with the agency in terms of the tax increment that's being collected, how it's being spent, and the indebtedness that we're incurring as we move the project and plan forward. This is set up very similarly to your past financial reports for the agency, and it follows the ORS specifically in terms of what's required.
Great. And as those at the DIAS know, we had an opportunity to meet as a urban renewal agency at 6 o'clock this evening, and we had to report their annual report, a part of that. So any questions of Heather on the financial report? Hearing none, I'll ask for a approval of Resolution 2020-5.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved by Kelly and seconded by Sal. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by saying nay. Resolution 2020-5 passes unanimously six to zero. Resolution 2020-6 is a resolution appointing members to the McMinnville Planning Commission. Heather, if you could lead us through that?
Sure. So Mayor and councilors, in front of you is a resolution to appoint two planning commissioners to the planning commission. This is to fill two terms of, for planning commissioners that expired at the end of the year and they chose not to reapply. It's filling Christopher Knapp's term, which, who filled Zach's term, and Christopher moved on to the Historic Landmarks Committee. And then Martin Kraus-Mazen, who's been with the planning commission for 10 years, also decided not to continue, and he's going to enjoy his retirement at this point in time. The two planning commission vacancies were in Ward 1 and At Large. We did some interviews and are recommending that Beth Rankin be appointed to the Ward 1 position and that Robert Banagay be appointed to the At Large position. Beth comes with a background in urban and regional planning and has been in our community for a little less than 10 years. Am I representing that correctly? Okay. And we're excited to have her on board. And then Robert Banagay has, is an executive with TTR, one of our corporate headquarters here in town that's been expanding fairly aggressively. And he's been involved in our project advisory committee work at the long-range planning level. So he's been, he's on our Three Mile Lane Area Plan Project Advisory Committee and on our Housing Needs Analysis and Economic Opportunity Analysis Committee. He's enjoyed the work. He's done a lot, he's had a lot of learning associated with that, and he wants to get more involved. So we're excited to see that happen, and he's the recommendation for the At Large member.
Thank you, Heather. The nominating committee was made up of Heather, Roger Hall, who is the chair of the planning commission, and myself. And we really had thorough, good interviews. We had more candidates than we had positions, and it's always good to be in that position. So I would ask for a motion to, well, let's back up. Any discussion of Heather on candidates? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion to approve Resolution 2020-6.
So moved.
Moved.
Okay. I'll go with Zach and a second by Kelly. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying nay. Resolution 2020-6 passes unanimously six to zero. Now, this takes us to our ordinances this evening. And so under consideration, we've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. We have six items on the agenda that are ordinances 5084, 5085, 5086, 5087, 5088, and 5089. These are all related to one development project but are separate land use decisions. If no one objects to, if no one objects, I'd like to suggest that we receive the staff report with the planning commission's recommendation and have staff present all six of them in one report. So anyone in opposition to not having that all put together?
I'm not in opposition, Mr. Mayor, but I do have a order on this section. I, ordinance 5090 and 5091, the only two that weren't part of that package, I think are going to be a much shorter debate. And I don't know if anybody from the public is here to speak to either of those two, but I was wondering if you'd entertain if there is moving 5090 and 5091 ahead of the other package so that those people can get out, because I think it's going to be a shorter.
Yeah, I'd recommend that, too.
Okay. Do you see any?
Nope, no problem.
Okay, so that would take us to 90 and 91? Okay. So is that gonna, are you going to be able to do that, Heather?
Yeah, certainly. Just, but just as a reminder, this isn't a public hearing tonight. Both of these are staff reports to you as city council, and then you then have the opportunity to decide if you want to have a public hearing. If you do want to have a public hearing, we will then notice it.
Okay. So what I will ask for after Heather's presentation is, do we want to have a first reading or if we want to have a public hearing? And so if we, if we have a first reading, then we'll take it to a second reading without public hearing. And if we have a public hearing, that would be moved to January 28th, our next regularly scheduled, so that we can make notice of that. And then we will do the first reading and second reading after the public hearing on the 28th.
Okay.
So I think they all blend together, and I think we have a presentation that's germane to everything, wouldn't you say?
Yeah, it's two separate development projects, so you will have two separate presentations. One is for the first six ordinances, that's the Baker Creek North project. And the second is for the last two ordinances, 5090 and 91, which is for a rezone and conditional use permit on Second Street.
I think I'm hearing that they want to do the second one first.
Okay.
And then Mayor, just before you introduce that, I just wanted to introduce Spencer Parsons. He's with us tonight. He's our legal counsel for land use issues right now. He's been working with our team since November. He's familiar with both of these projects, and he's working with our planning commission. So he'll be here during city council meetings when we have land use decisions in front of you. If you have any questions of legal counsel, obviously you can ask Walt or you can ask Spencer as well.
Okay. Spencer, welcome. It's good to have you with us. Okay, so if I'm hearing this right, let's take a look at the zone changes, ordinance which would be 50, 5090 and 5091, and we'll go through that first. So Heather, or is it Jamie? Has got this one.
Getting a three-hour head start. Good evening, Mayor and councilors.
Welcome.
So this is the consideration for ordinance 5090, zone change 419, and ordinance 5091, conditional use 419, both at land use applications at 1945 Northwest Second Street. The subject property is a .82 acre property on Northwest Second Street between Meadows Drive and Northeast Hillside Parkway. Zone change 419, ordinance 5090, requests a rezone of the property from R1, which is the single-family residential zone, to R4, which is the multiple-family residential zone. And ordinance 5091 is the conditional use application requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow for the development of a dental clinic on the site. Here's an aerial photograph of the, of the site. You can see Meadows Drive to the, to the right of the highlighted property. Immediately to the east of that property is a Mack Water and Light substation. To the north, west, and to the south are single-family properties. Immediately to the south across Second Street is the Salvation Army campus, and the larger property to the west on the map is the Hillside Continuing Care Facility. Along with the applications, the applicant submitted a preliminary site plan concept, which you see on the screen in front of you. It's oriented where north is to the, to the left of the screen. So along Second Street to the right, you would see the dental clinic and associated off-street parking. And then on the north end of the site would be multiple-family dwelling units. So we'll review zone change 4-19, which is the proposal to rezone the property from R1 to R4. You can see the existing zoning map and the proposed zoning map, as I described, to the north. And to the south are single-family homes in the R2 zone. To the west is R4 zoning, and to the, immediately to the east is the only other R1 zone, zone property on the lot, which is the Mack Water and Light substation. The larger, bright yellow property there is Quarry Park. So you can see it's kind of an isolated parcel with R1 zoning. And the proposal would rezone that to R4, as you can see on the right. The zoning ordinance, Chapter 1774020, outlines the review criteria for approval of a zone change. And there are three criteria, the first being consistency with the comprehensive plan, the second being the orderly and timeliness of the proposal, and the third being that it can be, the proposal can be served efficiently with utilities and services. The orderly and timeliness of the proposal is not applicable in this case because it deals with needed housing, which is a provision of the code to remove that criteria from consideration. So we're just looking at the comprehensive plan and provision of utilities and services as criteria tonight. The key issues for those criteria, the consistency with the comprehensive plan, we were looking at goals and policies specifically in Chapter 5, which deal with housing and residential development, transportation, community facilities or utilities, and then urbanization, including the Great Neighborhood Principles. Relative to the public facilities and services, we're looking at specifically utilities and the transportation network in the surrounding area. So as we looked at the comprehensive plan for consistency of the application, we looked to Policy 7113 that deals with criteria for locational, it outlines, locational criteria for high-density residential development, which this site would become with the R4 zone. There are eight criteria there, and the first four are up on the screen, which the proposal meets. It's not committed to lower-medium density development. It can be buffered from the adjacent low-density residential areas, has direct access from an arterial street, which Second Street is classified as, and there are no development limitations based on the geography or topography of the site. The fifth criteria in Policy 7113 deals with existing facilities and assuring that they have capacity for additional development. So for that, we're looking at the transportation network and the road, specifically Northwest Second Street. As I mentioned, it's a minor arterial street, and in the transportation system plan for McMinnville, it's designed to accommodate 20,000 average daily trips, and it's designed to accommodate medium and high-density adjacent uses, which the R4 zone proposed for the site would be. The applicant submitted a trip generation evaluation examining how the development in, the increased development and the increased density from the R1, R4 zone in the proposal would differ from what's available for development in the existing R1 zone. And they generated some findings based on the net new trips on the site, or that the proposed development would generate. And based on that, the traffic engineer concluded that that traffic increase from the proposed development and rezone would not have a significant impact on the Second Street and the surrounding traffic network. McMinnville currently has no standard for requiring a traffic impact analysis, which would analyze specific levels of services of nearby streets and intersections. And part of the trip generation evaluation submitted in the application reviewed other community standards for when a TIA is required. And you can see on a chart there that outlines the standards of some other communities. And in order to protect the integrity of the traffic and the transportation system in the surrounding area, there's a condition of approval with the zone change that would require a transportation impact analysis if the increase in trips as a result of development on the site is increased by more than 200 average daily trips or the 20 p.m. peak hour trips, which is the strictest threshold of the communities that we examined. So it's really to, really to protect and assure that the transportation network is not overburdened by development on the site. Other locational requirements for high-density housing are that the site be within a half-mile of public transit route. Second Street has Yamhill Community Transit routes with stops immediately adjacent to the site. And the site is also within a quarter-mile of commercial shopping areas, as you can see on the map. And the final locational policy is that high-density residential is required to be adjacent to either public or private permanent open space. And as you can see by the, the green areas on the map, which are park, park sites, the subject site is within close proximity to those but not adjacent. So another condition of approval requires some permanent open space be included in the development on site. The proposal checked a number of boxes in the Great Neighborhood Principles, including natural feature preservation. There's many mature trees on the site where the intention is to preserve, preserve those trees. We just talked about parks and open spaces. The proximity to that encourages use of that. The proximity to schools and parks and the commercial shopping areas of the site promote pedestrian use. And the proposal is bicycle-friendly with its proximity to the Second Street bike lane and the West Side bicycle pedestrian trail. And then just because it's, the proposal is for multiple-family housing, it would include housing for diverse incomes and generations and a variety of housing in the area. So with consistency with the comprehensive plan, we then can turn to the facilities and services to make sure that the proposal is able to be served by that. We talked about streets a little bit and reviewed how findings have been provided by the applicant to determine that the proposal doesn't impact the streets, but a condition of approval does protect the, the transportation system should trips generate more than anticipated, or the proposal generate more trips than anticipated. Utilities currently adequately serve the R1, the single-family development on the site. However, there have been identified issues with sewer capacity for full development of the R4, of the site should it be rezoned to R4. of the R4, of the site should it be rezoned to R4. You can see on the map, the subject site, and that red, red line kind of to the south and to the east is the sewer main that would serve that site. And it's been identified as full under future conditions. And so it would be, it would have insufficient capacity for full R4 development. And so in order to protect the sewer system and protect downstream development, there's a condition of approval recommended that limits the development on the subject site to 48 equivalent dwelling units, which is essentially the three, three dwelling units worth of sewer flow from that site. And so that will protect until the sewer, the downstream sewer capacity is addressed and improved. It would limit the site to the flow produced by the current R1 zoning. Additionally, storm sewer capacity was an identified issue, and a condition of approval would require storm water detention. And so these charts were provided in the staff report that you have in front of you and identify the conditions that help the application meet the criteria, which they were able to meet through the condition. There was no public testimony received for this application by the Planning Department prior to the public hearing at Planning Commission. And at Planning Commission, one testimony expressed concern about increasing traffic levels on Second Street, not necessarily supporting or opposing the project, just expressing concern about traffic. Planning Commission found that the applicable criteria were satisfied or satisfied with conditions and voted seven to nil to recommend approval with conditions to the City Council. Now I can go into ordinance 5091, which is a conditional use permit request for the approval of a conditional use permit to allow development of a new dental clinic on an R4 zone site. This application would be conditional on the approval of zone change 419, ordinance 5090, because hospital and clinic is a conditional use in the R4 zone, and the clinic being defined as a medical facility for treatment examination of outpatients conducted by a group of physicians, dentists, and other licensed practitioners meeting the definition. Again, I'll refer you to the site plan concept. The outlined area would be the area of the conditional use, featuring the dental clinic, approximately 3,200 square feet on the southwest corner of the site, and an off-street parking lot adjacent to the Mack Water and Light substation on West Second Street. The zoning ordinance outlines the review criteria for conditional use. Again, we're looking at, looking for consistency with the comprehensive plan. We're looking to see that the proposal is compatible with and has minimal impact on the surrounding neighborhood, specifically with the listed categories having to do with bulk and scale relative to the surrounding neighborhood, public facilities and utilities, traffic, and other impacts the development may have. As we've seen in some of the zone change review, the facilities and utilities were met during, met with conditions during that review. Traffic was found to be not impactful on West Second Street. And the proposal of the dental clinic itself was found to be harmonious in scale and bulk and coverage relative to the surrounding development. There was no significant impact relative to permitted uses. The design of the site and structures was reviewed and found to be attractive. As the setting warranted, the mature trees and the preservation of those mature trees met the criteria for preservation of environmental assets and the bona fide intent and capability to develop and use the land. The property owner is a local dentist looking to expand her, her business within McMinnville and has been a resident of the, of the town and community for, for a long time and does have legitimate intent and, and capability to develop the land to, to meet her needs. The zoning ordinance also allows conditions to be placed on a conditional use permit to ensure its compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. And Planning Commission recommends four additional conditions to the conditional use permit to limit the hours of operation of the dental clinic, limiting the height of the clinic structure to no more than 35 feet, which is the height limit of surrounding residential zones, to limit the location intensity of outdoor lighting to assure that any lighting in, of the clinic does not impact and go beyond the property, and to require a fence along the western property line that would help provide some privacy between the clinic and the single-family homes to the west. So again, a chart was provided in the staff report that shows the conditions of approval and how they were meeting the criteria and issues. Some of the zone change conditions work in favor of the criteria for the conditional use as well. Again, there was no public testimony received by the Planning Department prior to the public hearing, and the same comment was received at the public hearing relative to concern about increasing traffic levels on Second Street. The Planning Commission found that the criteria for the application for the conditional use were satisfied and satisfied with conditions, and again, voted seven to nothing to recommend approval with conditions to the City Council. And I'll just remind you once again that this is conditional on the approval of ordinance 5090, the zone change. So the council options tonight are to complete the first and possible second readings as recommended by the Planning Commission, or you also have the option to call for a public hearing on the applications. I'll point out that the 120-day land use timeline for these applications do expire on February 8th. And to accommodate noticing requirements, we would need, it would require a special meeting of the council to have a public hearing, and then first and second readings between February 8th, or between February 4th and February 8th. That still didn't come up. Are there any questions I can answer?
Any clarifying questions that anyone would have on these two particular ordinances?
Counselor Prada?
Go ahead, Sal.
Yeah, thanks, Jamie. Great job, as usual. You're so thorough. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
The only question I had was what was the applicant's response to the conditions? Were they supportive of the conditions that were recommended by the Planning Commission?
Yes, yes, they were.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Then we're, on these two items, ordinance 5090 and 5091, we have the opportunity to either schedule a public hearing on these ordinances, or we can take a first reading of the ordinances. What would be your desire this evening? Sal?
My preference would be to take a first reading on, on the ordinance. This is exactly, both ordinances, this is the kind of development that I think makes a lot of sense for our city in terms of increasing the density of residential and tying residential to commercial activities. I know Melinda Judd, I think she's capable of seeing the project to completion and with no public complaints, I don't see any reason not to move forward with this.
Thank you. Any, any, any other comments other than that?
No, I would concur. I don't see any reason for a public hearing.
Okay, so we will take a first reading on this ordinance. And so I'll have the city attorney please read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number 5090, an ordinance approving a zone change from R1, single-family residential to R4, multiple-family residential for a .82 acre parcel on Northwest Second Street. And ordinance number 5091, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for a dental clinic at 1945 Northwest Second Street.
Thank you, Walt. I'll ask for a motion to pass ordinances 5090 and 5091 to a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Zach and seconded by Adam. And so Walt, if you would read, give us a second reading of 5090 and 5091.
Ordinance number 5090, an ordinance approving a zone change from R1, single-family residential to R4, multiple-family residential for a 8.82 acre parcel on Northwest Second Street. Ordinance number 5091, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for a dental clinic at 1945 Northwest Second Street.
Okay. I will ask if we have a motion to adopt ordinance number 5090. Do we have, do we have a motion?
So moved.
And a second? And so we have Kelly moved and Adam seconded. I'll ask the city recorder to poll the council.
Counselor Drapkin?
Aye.
Counselor Garvin?
Aye.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counsel Strossen?
Stassen?
Aye.
Counsel, Counsel Peralta?
Aye.
And Counsel President Minkie?
Aye.
After the roll call, ordinance number 5090 is adopted with a vote of six to zero. Thank you. The city, the city attorney has had a second reading of 5091. I'll ask for a motion to adopt 5091.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Been moved by Sal and seconded by Kelly. I'll ask the city recorder to poll the council.
Counselor Drapkin? She stepped out. Counselor Garvin?
Aye.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counsel Stassen?
Aye.
Counsel Peralta?
Aye.
And Counsel President Minkie?
Aye.
Make it known that ordinance 5091 is adopted by a vote of five to zero. Five to zero. And, and so now, thank you for those two ordinances. We'll now revert back to where we, the multiple ordinances that we need to take. Break. Resolution. Okay. Okay, so we've got, yeah, we're, I don't know. Yeah, we're there. So we'll, we'll go ahead and take five minutes and then reconvene as we're looking at ordinances of 5084 through 5089.
Five minutes.